Mayor Roland Dykes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball. Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Here.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith. City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fitchell.
Here.
Thank you. We do have a quorum and can conduct the business of the City of Newport. Item three is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. In your package, you've received a regular session from August 12th, 2025. If you've had a chance to look those over, we entertain a motion to approve those as presented.
So moved.
Sir.
Any discussion? Hearing none, motion carries. Proclaimations and the recognition of citizens by the mayor or any alderman. Hearing none. Communications from the city administrator, Mr. James Fitchell.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing, and it's already been noted, we have two members short tonight. They both asked me to express their apologies for not being able to be here, but both of them are having medical issues. And so I told them I would share that, that they would be here if they weren't under the weather. The next thing is on the agenda tonight, we have two items for zoning of two recently annexed areas. And we have been asked to put that off till October. So it's still on the agenda because that only come up this morning. And so respectfully, we would ask that that be withdrawn and put back on for consideration next month. The final thing I have is to announce that the last day of the farmer's market for this season will be September 27th. The market will reopen for the street festival the first weekend in October. And so we feel like it's been, you know, for our first year and opening a new location, we've had a lot of positive feedback and it went very well. And I think that next year, we've learned a lot and it'll be even better next year. And we've already got some money from the state to help us build a farmer's market pavilion down off the Riverwalk, down behind where the police department is now. So we think, we hope, best case scenario, we may have that up and going next year. That's our goal, but I wouldn't say here, I can't sit here and just guarantee it, but that is our goal. That's all I got there. Thank you.
Thank you. Item six is appointment of boards, commissions, and committees. At this point, I don't have any appointments to announce. I will say that I did receive today a letter from Mr. James McSweene, who is requesting that his resignation be accepted for resigning on the planning commission. I haven't talked to Mr. McSweene yet, but I plan to see when, exactly when he might be planning to retire from that board. But as of right now, I think he is planning for it to be effective immediately. We will have a replacement named shortly. Reports from committees, members of council, and other officers. Hearing none, we'll move on. Old business, of which we have none today. New business. Consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2025-13, budget amendment for the City of Newport.
And Mayor, I'll read the caption of that into the record. It's ordinance number 2025-13, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the City of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2025-2026.
Heard the reading. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2025-13, budget amendment for the City of Newport. It has been properly seconded. Need a roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item B is consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2025-14, budget amendment for the Newport Grammar School.
Right, boss, that's ordinance number 2025-14, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the City of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2025-2026, for Newport Grammar School.
Heard the reading. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2025-14, budget amendment for this Newport Grammar School. Has been properly seconded. Please roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item C is consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2025-15, amending title and alcoholic beverages, chapter four permits, adding section four dash four one three, golf course regulations.
Mayor, you read the entire caption into the record, so we're good.
Okay. You heard the reading. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion then to approve consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2025-15, amending title, eight alcoholic beverages, chapter four permits, adding section four dash four one three, golf course regulations. Has been properly seconded. Please roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
So we skipped over item D and E. Item F is consideration of resolution number 2025-15, Plan of Service for West Highway 2570.
This is a lot that is right near the interstate exit. They've requested annexation in the city limits. They've got a project, a mixed-use retail residential project. Nothing, no plans submitted, concept only, but they are interested in city services once they do the project. So everything would go through planning commission and approval through building and code department. And there's no cost to us because the water sewer, we already deliver services beyond that point, water sewer in place.
Heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, okay. All right, we have a motion on the board to approve consideration of resolution number 2025-15, Plan of Service for West Highway 2570. It has been properly seconded. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item G is consideration of resolution number 2025-16, adopting the 2025-2030 County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. Joe, would you like to speak?
Good evening, Your Honor.
Get up.
Good evening, everybody. So the, there are three pieces of doctrine that Cock County, every county is required to keep and maintain. One would be the debris management plan. The other would be the basic emergency operations plan. And the final one is the hazard mitigation plan, which is why I'm here this evening. Both the basic emergency operations plan and hazard mitigation plan are up for rewrite every five years. About 20 or so years ago, FEMA designated that every county in Tennessee needed to have a hazard mitigation plan. We wrote the first one in my first year here. It was my first major project in 2019. And if you'll recall, I was here a little more than five years ago and we went through this back then. We spent the last seven months, Chief Shelton, members of Parrotsville City and Cock County got together over a couple of meetings and we essentially rewrote the hazard mitigation plan. The hazard mitigation plan tells you about everything that you want to know about the county. There's historical data, there's demographics, there's topography, there's census data, but it also tracks the natural disasters that have occurred in the county going back several decades. So with that information, we attempt to formulate an idea or a plan of how we can best mitigate against disaster. Mitigate meaning preserving life property in agriculture and lessening the effects that a natural or man-made disaster would have on the county. So the plan, do you all have a copy of the resolution? Because I brought some. Okay.
Yeah.
So with this, there are grant projects that we agreed were a priority for the county. One would be a backup generator for the emergency operations center. Believe it or not, there is no backup generator for the emergency operations center, but we've been fortunate up to now. I also want to purchase backup generators for the Newport Rescue Squad and the six volunteer fire departments. Their contributions in a disaster are absolutely mission critical and they need to be able to operate and be used as warming or evacuation shelters in an emergency. Evacuation route signs. And the other big one would be an early warning audible devices throughout the county. I proposed a plan that asks for six outside sirens, warning devices. They're making them now to where you can display a different tone for a different type of emergency. So a tornado or straight line wind would have, you'd hear a certain siren. A dam breach or a flood or dam failure would have something different strategically placed around the county so that everybody has an opportunity to receive early warnings that would work in conjunction with our Facebook social media platform as well as Hyperreach, which Monica Homa was the architect of our mass notification system and our local media partners. So Shannon Ball called me a couple of weeks ago, said that there are several million dollars allocated to the state of Tennessee for this type of a project. Tennessee's portion of it's going to be about $6 million. The sirens that I'm asking for are roughly $60,000 apiece. I suspect the big push is coming from the disaster that happened at the outdoor camp in Texas because new legislation is being passed every day to protect people against that type of flooding. So I think that's probably where this is coming from. So we intend to take full advantage of it and work it until we can't work it any longer. This is something that Alderman Hansel and I have been discussing for, no kidding, four years. And it's just a matter of writing it and finding the money to pay for it, so. With that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Joe, I'd like to say that I've read through the whole 300 pages of your proposal, but I did not, so I'm relying on your expertise.
Oh, I was gonna say, sir, if you read through it, you'd be the only one.
That probably. You've heard the board's presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion on board to approve consideration of resolution number 2025-16, adopting the 2025-2030 County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. It has been properly seconded. Just do a roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Joe, I didn't read some of it. You're fine. Well, he'll be invited in five years to review the next one.
Item H is consideration of authorizing Parks and Rec to update the grant record for the original RTP grant utilized to construct Park to Float and to receive funding for the reconstruction of Park to Float.
Mayor, Tim was gonna, planned on being here tonight to explain this in better detail. And he asked Molly to come and Molly got sidetracked on something. So Tim is with the county rec board battling trying to get some kinks worked out of the Little League programs. And so, but this is just something that we're gonna have to do to, we've got to restabilize the bank all up and down the river. And this is just one more, many steps in that direction that we're gonna have to take to get the park to float back and get the entire bank along the river all restabilized where it was washed, what it was washed away during the flood.
Heard the board, the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion then to approve consideration of authorizing Parks and Rec to update the grant record for the original RTP grant utilized to construct Park to Float and to receive funding for the reconstruction of Park to Float. Has been properly seconded. Please signify acceptance by aye.
Aye.
May's have like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Item I is consideration of authorization of mural at 119 McSweene Avenue.
Hi. This is part of the event we're going to have on the 26th to commemorate one year of the Helene flood. If you've noticed maybe over here on McSweene, this building's been getting redone. It looks real good on the back side rear, commissioning a mural that will go back there. It is, the theme of the event is Shine On Newport. And I do, I did a concept. Is that what you've got, Terry?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's sort of what it'll look like, maybe a little bit different, but just the, it's gonna be unveiled at the event. And it's just kind of a little slogan to shine on through the darkness after everything we went through down here.
Okay. Heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have, excuse me, have a motion on the board for consideration of authorization of mural at 119 McSweene Avenue has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
May's have like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Did you vote?
Yes.
Okay. It was unanimous then, okay. Item J, consideration of authorization of utilizing city property and closure of McSweene Avenue for Shine On Newport event hosted by the Newport Main Street Association.
Okay, still hammering out the details, we're close on everything, but just the elevator pitch is gonna have a kickoff event back at City Hall. That's why we'll need that. We will need you utilize the Riverwalk. There will be live music setup where the Riverwalk terminates down near the police department. And we're asking to shut down about half of McSweene Street for our artisans to set up over there. And then the tent for the fundraising dinner will be put on city lot over next to Simple Cafe, because Simple's catering it. He just does not have the seating to accommodate that many people.
And the date is the 26th?
Yes, sir.
September 26th?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, you've heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then to approve consideration of authorization of utilizing city property and closure of McSweene Avenue for Shine On Newport event hosted by the Newport Main Street Association. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
And may's have like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Item K is consideration of authorization of closing McSweene Avenue for second annual trunk or treat for Cock County Sheriff's Office.
Sheriff Ball, CJ Ball, has requested to shut down McSweene for his annual trunk or treat that he has around the courthouse. He's done this for the last several years and he would just like to continue that tradition again this year.
It's on October 28th.
Yes, sir.
Of course, you've heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then for consideration of authorization of closing McSweene Avenue for second annual trunk or treat for Cock County Sheriff's Office. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
May's have like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Item 10A, consideration of bids for patrol vehicle for the police department.
Hello, I'm here to request the purchase of a patrol vehicle, one patrol vehicle from Ford Murphy's Borough at the cost of $45,655 with an outfit from Dana Safety and a signing package. It goes on the side for $675, a total of $61,758.28. And it is in our budget.
Heard the board, you heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve consideration of bids for patrol vehicle for the police department in the amount of $61,758.28. It has been properly seconded. We need a roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks. We have 11 comments from citizens. We have five minutes, please. Mr. Phil Bone.
Good evening. My name is Phil Bone and I live on 5165 Raven Branch out in Cock County. It's in Grassy Fort. I'm here to let you know about what's going on as far as the clearing of the right of ways for the power lines by Newport Utilities. They fall into your purview, so I thought you might like to know. So 10 years ago and a couple of weeks from now, my wife and I were blessed with stewardship of 10 acres out in Cock County. And my jaw still drops when I walk around the property. See the water cascading down through the rocks and a creek that runs right by our house. And just the beauty of it all, it's like no one can own that. You know, we're just granted the stewardship of it for while we're here. I take that responsibility very seriously and for 10 years, I've been working on that plate. Two years ago, 2023, I came home to my, my wife's in tears. And I asked her what was wrong. She said, go look out the back. We have a whole wall of rhododendrons in the backyard, or we had. And they were gone. And looking up the mountain, it had all been wiped out, 30 feet wide for this right of way for the power lines. The rhododendrons have been there for probably 100 years and they weren't close to reaching those power lines. So I'm not gonna go into all that went on with my discussions with Newport Utilities back then, but obviously they have the right of way and they did what they wanted. They told me that it would be another five or 10 years, they'd do it again. Okay, now, on my wife's birthday, August 13th of this year, I hear all this racket going on, chainsaws and everything. And there's Newport Utilities contractor out there clearing the way again, two years later, not five or 10. So I had spent a lot of time and money to create an entrance at our property of a wildflower flower bed. And these folks were chainsawing the trees in the brush behind it. All fun. I noticed that the trees, instead of being tossed back, were being tossed forward into the flowers. And I mentioned that to them and I cleared it out. And the response I got was that I was very fortunate that they were the ones doing it instead of the bush hog, because the bush hog probably would have cut all the flowers down. I said, so you're done then? He said, yes, we are. Day two rolls around, here they are again. And they don't tell you they're even coming on your property. They just help themselves to whatever. And this time, they had whacked off all the branches going up a Bartlett pear tree, which is that first picture there. It's a beautiful tree, flowering in the springtime. It's one of the first times the spring got flowers over the whole thing. And you can see what they left. Back in 2023, that tree was there, hadn't grown much since then. It was fine then, but now it's a tree trunk. From there, they went up the mountain, cutting everything in sight and just left it. I mean, that's where our house is. So if a fire occurs, our house is going. And that's nothing but fire tinder all over there. It would go up in a heartbeat. That was on Thursday, the 14th. On Monday, the 18th, they were back again. Again, then every time I talked to them, I said, I'd like to know when you're coming on the property. At least I know you're here and what's going on. Never do. So I come out to go to the doctor's appointment and I start down the driveway and their truck is blocking the whole driveway and they're cutting branches off a tree. And I told them, you're gonna have to chip those branches. Can't just leave them laying all around like that, a mess. Well, we don't have a chipper with us. I said, well, you'll need to get one.
Your time is.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, long story short, they have no respect for people's properties. It's not just mine. I have a neighbor, they ran over her water line and she pointed it out to them. They didn't do anything about it. All right. Just to let you know.
I have to meet with the board of Newport and Newport in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, as I've mentioned to you when you called, although technically, I guess, we do own Newport Utilities, but they have their own board, they operate pretty autonomously. If, I don't know that, you didn't mention whether that pear tree you mentioned was actually on your property or was it on the right of way?
Oh, it's on my road. All of this is on our property. It's past the 30 feet. And they've done up their entire property covered with dry litter.
Yeah.
And not the stars, with the entire mountains.
You have spoke with Newport Utilities?
And I've attempted to speak with Newport Utilities. They have been unhelpful and non-responsive and then basically hold repeatedly that bad standard operating procedure. They told me it was still legal to plant anything under a power line, that you can have your garden and grow crops or anything, it's seen everywhere.
Those flowers were certainly not part of the power line. You go up there and it's red, it's red, there's weeds and stuff taller than those flowers are under the power lines, they're still there. It was just delightful that he had to come back and chop up the branch.
Going down a bunch of wildflowers. And, you know, and again, it's not a star property. They destroyed culverts that, yeah, this is the mountain, there's culverts everywhere because there's streams everywhere, they just, they destroyed parts of all of several culverts on different properties with no, you know, no buyer leave or come back to fix it or anything. They destroyed their water line, that.
Well, as the mayor said, we sympathize with the problem, but there's nothing this body can do to help them. The proper place is the board of directors of Newport Utilities.
As the, as the city, even with, you can't even like express, you know, sure would be nice if you guys would be responsive to the citizens of this county and after speculating and repair damages.
I mean, again, that's up to the Newport Utilities Board. Thank you for your time.
Sir. I've had a similar experience. I came home.
He wants to.
And I was a masticator.
Please come to the microphone if you want to speak.
My name is Rick Demmer and I live at 1525 DePaul Road off of 73. I came home about two years ago in June to have, to see a masticator, which is a big machine that has chains and it whirl around and they just shred trees. And they were, they were doing the right of way, but they were also doing my property outside of the right of way. When I tried to stop the masticator from doing that, the contractor who was driving it threatened me saying, if you, if, if one of these trees falls on the power line, you're gonna have to pay for the power for the whole neighborhood. Then he started going again. He wouldn't stop. I had to drive my car in front of his machine to stop him. After I did that, I called Newport Utilities and they had somebody come out. And I said, you know, it would have been nice if you had told me you were coming. He said, easier, easier to ask forgiveness than. coming." He said, "Easier, easier to ask forgiveness than permission." And I said, "Well, you know, you're taking, you've taken fifteen feet outside of your right, right of way on my property. You've cut down numerous beautiful dogwoods that have been there a hundred years or so." And he said, "We take whatever we can get." And after that, you know, I negotiated with them to stop because they wanted to cut not only that, but they wanted to cut all the way up my driveway because the power line went to my house. And they thought, "Well, anything we can get, we'll take. If it's a seventy-five-foot tree and it could fall down on that power line, we want it. So we're going to cut everything down." That's what they wanted to do. But I got them, I got them to settle for their fifteen-foot right of way on that power line and stopped them from doing anything else to my property. They also damaged the road with that machine. So the road's now in very poor condition, and you can still see the tracks that that tracked vehicle, heavy tracked vehicle had made.
They continue to damage roads, too, and it's also from the latest set of contractors that are out there. Tear and park roads, tear and park culverts, leaving homeowners with hundreds of thousands of dollars of repair work.
And reducing property values, reducing property values.
Again, I wish we could do something to help, but unfortunately, we, we can't. We may have a little influence with them, but it's a three-pronged situation because the board and their employees actually use a contractor to do most of that work. I'm not sure who, who you spoke with, but they have a contractor that does...
I have his name, but I don't have him with me.
Yeah. But I don't know if it's Wolf Tree or someone else.
He's an actual employee with Newport Utilities. The contractor had threatened me more than once, and then Newport Utilities tried to get me to sign something that say, "I would do all the clearing from then on, and if I didn't, then I would have to pay the damages."
And another neighbor signed that contract, saying he would be responsible for it. And this year, they got his boxwood elder all chopped down, culvert down to his roadway smashed. After he signed the maintenance contract. He showed it to the contractor. The contractor said, "Well, nobody told us anything about that."
They disregarded the contract when I was proud of it.
They just don't care.
They don't care what people have been talking for.
Time much within the landscaping, destroyed part of his culvert.
My water line has been there for twenty-five years. I just got the ditch and dumped it all in. Yeah, I compared it. It's above the ground now. I told them that it went through as all filthy.
How, how do they have leave to tear and park roads? Not just clear their lines, but in the process, destroy private property without apparently no accountability?
They have a board.
Y'all can't do any kind of regulation, right?
Aren't they, your worldview is a public utility?
Sure, sure they are.
Yes.
So you need to go to their board.
I have. I'm on the agenda in two weeks. I don't get into that much, but I hope they can get on it. Just thought you should know that they're supposed to be under your purview.
It seems like you can get them for trespass if they're cutting trees on your property outside of their right of way.
Well, I'm scheduled to be at that board meeting also, so I, like I said, I don't have any particular influence, but I do attend the board meetings. And when you go, I will let them know that you came here first. And I don't know that it's going to make a difference, but I will, I will let them know.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is... My name is Stella Dalton, and I'm from the Senior Citizens Center. And I'm speaking on behalf of all of us handicapped ones that can't get in and out of the door at the senior center. You have to wait for somebody to open it. When you go in, you got to wait for somebody to let you out. Also, bathroom doors, if I go to the bathroom there, I have to have somebody come with me to open the doors. It would be really appreciated if something could be done about it.
Gary, do we have any plans for handicap accessibility for any?
Their, the bathrooms are ADA compliant.
The bathroom is, but the door's not.
We could upgrade the doors, is what I was going to say.
Yeah. Okay. You can now, but I can't.
I actually purchased a door shop that actually sold us down. It just has to be installed. And I'm trying to contact Lequay Glass.
Monica, could you stand up? We can't, Monica, could you stand up? We can't hear you. Can't hear you.
Uh, Lequay Glass should be...
Lequay Glass should be, I'm in contact with them, should be scheduling a retrofitting of the existing doors. We've already got electrical ran. We ran that well before Helene in order to, to have the electronic components for those doors. So that should be very soon. And as soon as we can get the door, it just slows it down to where it doesn't shut so fast, and it makes it easier to get in and out. So I've actually got that, that piece of, the closer. I've got that, and as soon as we can get that installed. So it'll be soon. I was on that before Helene, and then it kind of got sidetracked, but we're back on it. So we'll get that taken care of. All right. You're welcome.
Thank you, Monica.
You're welcome.
Any other comments in the public?
Hi. Thank you, Mayor Dykes, alderwoman. Sorry. Thank you, Mayor Dykes, alderwoman and aldermen, for letting me speak on behalf of the senior center. We have a wonderful senior center at the Tanner Building. And as of now, we currently have twelve events.
State your name, please.
I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
I'm so nervous. My name is Debbie Carter, and I am from the senior center. Okay? As you know, the Newport has a wonderful senior center at the Tanner Building. Currently, there are twelve events weekly going on, and several specialty things going on as well throughout the year. My favorite is Bingo. I inherited calling bingo from my now-deceased husband, which I took on proudly and willingly. It began four and a half years ago. Twelve was in attendance each week, to now twenty-five regularly, sometimes a little bit more. We have positive feedback, and everyone enjoys coming to Bingo, as well as all the other activities that they offer. We have both younger and older, able-bodied seniors from all walks of life. Whether it needs a little help with a wheelchair, a walker, hearing or sight, or just wanting companionship, we're all there, and it feels like family. One of our bingo friends, and she gave me permission to share this with you all. She's visually impaired, and her doctor had asked her to do a numbers exercise in order to help with her vision, because she has a hard time with the scene and stuff. What better way than bingo, right? That and so many other things that happen at the senior center is why I'm so passionately involved. When the center opened to the public four and a half years ago, we were blessed with having the whole floor of the Tanner Building. As it's been developed, we now are shrunk down to one room and half the kitchen. And knowing that there are regulations on the amount of people in the limited space, it feels like we're kind of getting pushed out of the building. We are proud of Newport and all that we are offered. Please help reassure us that we can prosper as we age gracefully here in Newport. Thank you so much for doing this, and I appreciate it. I've got a handout that we put together, and it just has some of the concerns. Mayor Dykes, may I come to you? And I have copies for each of you.
Okay.
So thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Not everybody's here. Anybody else, ma'am? Yes.
Okay. Debbie, I'm with the Senior Citizen Center. Now, where is Cock County Senior Center? It should be in the Tanner Building. As Debbie said, we had the whole bottom floor before. They took a piece of us for the welcome, and then the sheriff, or not the sheriff, to another part of the police took another one, and we're left with one room and one kitchen. Do you know how embarrassing it is when somebody would come in and speak to us, and then we have to put them in the kitchen to hear what they have to say when an official would come? Then that's embarrassing to us, anyway. But we have over two hundred people, and we have over twenty events that are there, that come to the center every week. And like Debbie said, bingo is the most biggest one. But the center is a center to come and meet people and enjoy ourselves and have fun, and like she said, with the bingo and everything. But we need a bigger place. That one room and that one little kitchen isn't going to do us, because we keep growing. More seniors come around. These are voters. They pay taxes. And sometimes we'd like to get out of the house and go somewhere instead of staying at home. So I hope you all could help us with this, because like I said, it just gives us a chance to get out and have a good time with our friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
How long do I have, Terry?
Thirty-six.
I'm Ken Johnson. I live on Nottingham Drive. I came here forty years ago to practice medicine, and I was in private practice thirty years, and now I practice hospice medicine. And one of the things that drove me here, drew me here, was the community center. I hate Tim's not here. I hope you're recording this for Tim. I'm here to compliment the leadership of the improvement of the recreation program at the community center has been phenomenal. Ever since that I was in practice, I encourage people to become involved in the aquaside, because you can do that when you can't do a lot of other things. As I like to say, motion is lotion. Get out there and get active. I encourage my patients to. Now that I'm a senior, I go to aquaside with a lot of these folks. And also, I just came here just a few minutes ago from Tai Chi. I have taken up Tai Chi, which is great for balance. And one of the leading causes of injuries to senior citizens is falls. And so I got involved in Tai Chi that I didn't even know anything about when I first came here. Once again, that happens at the senior center. There's so many wonderful things that you folks have made possible through the community center and the Tanner Center for seniors. I just can't say enough about it that a lot of places smaller than Newport do not have. We want to continue to perpetuate that as more of us folks, that I was thirty-one, I think, when I moved here. Now I'm way past that, past being a senior, over the hump of that. And as those people are coming into our town, and as ones that are here when I came here are aging, we can't do enough to give them more opportunities for activities, fellowship, stimulate the mind, the body, the heart and the soul. So I echo what these folks said. Continue, I pray and hope that you folks continue to help to maintain the senior center, bring more activities in. Keep that. Tim, thank you for all that you've done for the community center. That was, when I came here, it was a very raw place. Now it's developed in terms of equipment and physical plan and programs. It's amazing. So I salute you, leadership of our city, for what you have done to make that what it is, keep it going, and continue to help our senior center to grow and give us as much space and plant as you can, because we're getting older, and the population is getting older. The baby boomers are getting older. It's not going to, I don't think it's going to go away. So do all you can to help promote activities. Motion is lotion.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carleen Robinson. I'm the director for the senior center. This month, I don't know if you know, it's National Senior Center Month. And in observance of that, we're having an open house at our, at the senior center, at the Tanner Building, and we invite you all to come by and visit us on that day. It's going to be, as you can see, it's going to be on the twenty-sixth from ten to two. So please come by. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Carver?
For what it's worth, there aren't many days that go by that I don't try to think about, Monica and I do this, a place, a new building with more space for the senior center. Because before Walter State, if Walter State wasn't in the Tanner Building, I know why it wouldn't be me. It'd be Monica, be fighting with Carleen every day about trying to get as much space for you guys as she could, so you guys could have more activity. So I think about it a lot in the planning stages of trying to find something that would be more, that you guys would have room to grow. So maybe one day we'll find the right fit, and then we'll get another project on the books for a senior center. But, you know, for now, we appreciate what you guys, what you do for the community and being in the Tanner Building with us. That is not why I'm up here. If you know my personality, you know I don't really like doing stuff at this, this way, but when you were friends with my buddy Aaron since preschool, sometimes life comes at you fast. Aaron and I, Aaron is my real estate confidant, who is helping constantly trying to find new investors in not just, not just downtown Newport, but Newport in general. But Aaron being a stakeholder in downtown Newport, a business owner in downtown Newport, he sees the value in us revitalizing what we've got down here. And Alderman Hansel's championed it from day one. Luanna Odinger, Alderman Odinger and I talked about what I'm about to talk about here a little bit. It's a thing that we've drafted, we've worked on, but unfortunately, we have been hit. We are facing a time crunch on this. So what I'm going to give to you guys, what I'm going to give you guys is a draft of a, a way that we can jump forward the revitalization of downtown. And there's two ways that I've found in my research that other communities do, because there's, there's, there's no way that we're the only person, that we're the only town that faces something like when a building gets so dilapidated that it's not worth the developer coming in and knocking it down or trying to rehabilitate it. One option is for the city to buy the building and then turn it over to a developer for a discounted price. The other is this. So what you have in front of you is, were we to have a developer come to? So, what you have in front of you is, were we to have a developer come to us with a little bit of vision and the capital to make it happen, a plan that the city of Newport would help subsidize the demolition of a dilapidated building. This is something that other communities do. I didn't invent this. And we are lucky enough at the moment to have someone who is willing to invest in downtown. Here in the third row is Steve Wilson. He's the owner of Gatlinburg Brewing and a couple of other successful businesses and most in Sevier County, Steve. Have you branched out beyond Sevier County? Aaron brought Steve down here and he looked at some buildings, particularly the block between McMahon and Woodlawn on Main Street, which is, I think you guys will agree, one of our, one of the roughest parts of downtown. And Steve's guys looked at it and Aaron, you can correct me on any of this if you want when I'm done, but Steve's guys looked at it, his architects, his engineers, and they advised him pretty much not to do it because financially, he'll be underwater with how much repair the buildings need. And actually, most of them need to be demoed and built back above the base flood elevation, which is expensive. So, when Steve came to me, he kind of shaking his head, he never asked for a thing, he just said, "I can't do it." And I said, "Well, let me figure out what is something that could maybe make it financially feasible for a businessman?" Because otherwise, we're just going to have to hope one day that a rich somebody comes along and buys it just out of the goodness of their heart. So, the reason that I'm standing up here now and not in October with a full presentation for you is because we are running out of time on, Aaron, what are we, it's the due diligence period on the property from, Ms. Wu owns them and we have until, it's before the meeting in October. And Steve would have to have everything done, all his due diligence had to be done on the building before then, and she will not extend. And I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, and Terry, you can help me through this part too, Steve's looking for some kind of assurance or confidence in moving forward with his project that we might be willing to do the project on the paper there. Aaron, you want to?
So, yeah, so the amount of investment over here to rehab these buildings, it's just not worth it. It's not worth it to any investor to come in here, take the burden and the cost of trying to do any rehabilitation over here. We've ran the numbers, we've worked on this for months, and we've all come to the agreement, the conclusion that it makes more sense for someone to come in here and completely demo that half of the block and then just start rebuilding back up. Especially since we've got the flood regulations, over 100% of it, of course, is damaged. They're falling already. So, in order to build it up, we have to hit the flood guidelines, which is going to raise us about the elevation of the road tracks. That's costly in itself. As most of you know, I've been working on this, I've been working on seeing Ms. Wu, I brought her down here and the understanding that we would be able to get something going with her, unfortunately, it hasn't worked out. Steve has put together a contract. This is his second deal with Ms. Wu. The first contract, she was not willing to accept his due diligence time period that he needed to get everything done. She did not accept the contract. He actually offered full value while she was asking. Due diligence killed the deal. Steve proceeded from that point to go ahead and continue with his due diligence, get the elevation certificates, get the surveys, go ahead and best end these buildings, not even owning them, in order to close the gap so that Ms. Wu would accept his offer. Unfortunately, we're up against a very hard time to strike with her. Next week is the end of her due diligence. I was able to get the due diligence put out till we could have this meeting tonight. We can't come to an agreement tonight. Now, his due diligence runs up next week, therefore, she's not going to extend the contract. This would be his second go around. I've dealt with her quite some time. I know how she plays and this is kind of the situation we're in. So, I'm asking you guys to take into consideration, those buildings are going to be coming down very quickly and we're going to have something beautiful downtown that we all want, that this whole community wants and we're really starved for. We're starved for commerce down here. This is the opportunity. What we didn't have with Ms. Wu, we didn't have Ms. Wu sitting here at this city council meeting telling us right now that they're willing to commit if you all are willing to commit to them. And he's willing to commit. I've been to his places, I've been to his establishments, I have toured his establishments and it is top notch and it is something that we would get behind and be proud of down here in this community. So, I ask that you guys will carefully consider this and let's make the right decision tonight and let's move forward.
So, just to put it on the record, the agreement would be a tri-party agreement between the city of Newport. We chose the IDB, which they've not, again, I was thinking October, but life comes at you fast. They'll have to agree to it too, but it'd be a tri-party agreement where we make an appropriation to the IDB for redevelopment costs. It's four structures, $100,000 per structure was what we estimated. So, if Steve were to tear down one at a time, he could draw down $100,000 at a time. If he knocked them all down, he could draw down the whole $400,000 at once. We have a lien on the property until construction begins and then, because the bank won't touch it if the lien's on it. So, we keep a lien on it in the interim when he draws the funding down. The minute he goes into construction, Steve will sign an agreement and this will all be part of what will be on, that Trey would sign to move it forward. Steve will sign an agreement that if he does not do what he says he's going to do, which I have the concept stuff here, Aaron, you can stand up and help me roll it out and let everybody look at it. But he got me concept, I asked for concept on what he was willing to do because you guys need to see the vision that he's got in his head. Because he's standing down there on the sidewalk and him just getting excited, talking about what he's wanting to do in downtown Newport gets me excited. But he would sign an agreement that says if he doesn't do what he's going to do, the properties revert to us. So, worst case scenario, the city of Newport ends up with all of those lots on Main Street and the buildings are demoed. They're clean lots for us to try and negotiate with another developer if for some reason it doesn't work out.
Is the value of those lots with those structures not there to far outweigh the actual cost of what we're asking?
So, the city's safe in the event of something going sideways. Mr. Wilson's protected because he could move forward knowing that, that we're committed to this, what's in the agreement there about helping with the demolition of the structure. Mr. Finch, would you want to add anything about like just how far, how much we put? It seems like I'm coming at you out of nowhere, but this has been going on for a minute.
Yeah, that's correct. We've been discussing this for some time. The actual holdup has been the nailing property. We've been focusing on trying to get the nailing operation out of downtown and, you know, we've met obstacles on trying to get that done. And currently, we may have found a solution if we can acquire the property. That's the question mark right now. We found a suitable place that he likes, but we've got to see if we can buy the property. And that's why we hadn't moved forward. Gary actually, and I'm partially blamed for this, Gary actually wanted this to be on the agenda, I think it's far back, actually, it's July, that he wanted to bring this in front of y'all and I didn't feel like we were ready to do that. So, I have, I've drugged my feet on it. So, it's odd that I have to take the brunt of postponing it. I didn't know there was a deadline looming.
Or to die, yeah.
If I had known that, we would have addressed that more thoroughly instead of coming in here on a brick fine at the last minute. But Tina and I have talked about it financially, you know, it's sound as delivered. We can afford to do it. It is done in other places. We would just have to be sure to do our due diligence to make sure that the safeguards are in place, that if it goes, if for some unforeseen reason, and I don't have any reason not to have confidence in this gentleman, but if any unforeseen circumstance were to happen, I believe that we're covered. I think we would, I don't think that we would have any buyer spots that's hanging out that could blindside us. You know, I hate that it, I don't like having to do stuff this way. I never like it when stuff comes in at the last minute, especially something of this magnitude. This is a huge project, something we've never done before. But I do agree that sometimes you've got to think outside the box and be a little innovative. And it makes perfect logic to me that, in trying to redevelop and trying to revitalize downtown, why would you want to come? And we've made the same argument about folks that overprice their property. You know, we see these folks that ask Gatlinburg prices for property here and the argument always is, the logic, why would you pay Gatlinburg prices for a piece of property in Newport? When you go to Gatlinburg and buy a piece of property for the same amount in a guaranteed location that you're going to win at? And it's the same thing with this. You know, why would you come and spend a ton of money to tear down a building and then start spending money to build on when there's tons of vacant property all over the place that you go to and not have any of that headache and expense? So, it's perfectly logical to me that a developer, you know, is taking on more risk, more expense to do that. So, you know, as a pilot, I guess, for us, because we've never done it before, I, you know, I would be comfortable with trying it because I feel like that as long as we do our due diligence and the safeguards and the contracts are in place, I don't think that we can come out on the backside of it. But now, you know, it's like when the interstate blocks, you know, things are going great and then the interstate gets blocked and things don't go great. Anything, something could go wrong somewhere, but from looking at it and thinking about it, it seems logical.
Aaron or Gary, do we have, what kind of confidence do you have that Ms. Wu will not, will back out of this as we go forward?
I am 100% telling you right now, if we can't seal this deal, this is his last chance with Ms. Wu. Or I have to go and try to find someone else to come and invest and it's been very difficult as you well know.
And we need her, we need her cooperation on the church too.
Pardon me?
We're going to need her cooperation on the church too.
That's correct. I'm going to need her to walk right, she has properties on Castle Highway now listed. Her investment in Newport is not there. So, I really think and think we need to move.
Well, a couple of things, and Tina jogged me on something, and I mentioned this to Gary back when we were first discussing it. One thing that she would make her feel comfortable, and I'm all about that because she's in charge of the money, was to have a trustee that would handle the process. And we felt like somebody possibly, we've not approached him like Jeff Green or something, could be a trustee for it and make sure that as an independent outside entity, as an attorney could handle, make sure the transactions go back and forth as they should.
I put that sheet in front of Jeff and because, again, we weren't necessarily, but I mentioned it but did not get a confirmation, but, yeah, but he's looked at that and he actually gave me some, an idea on how to change one or two. That's a different draft than what was originally.
But Tina had mentioned that she would feel more comfortable if there was a trustee in place to protect both sides of the equation. That way, he wouldn't be in the developer's corner and he wouldn't be in our corner. He would be an independent operator in between the two, making sure that both sides are meeting their requirements and obligations. The other thing is, we need to get, of course, we've not gotten to the point where we're going to ask if you all want to add it to the agenda tonight. But we do need an amount for the record. We have, we need to put, we've got to put an amount in. We need, if it gets to that point, there's got to be an amount on the record.
The letter as it is says 500 because it's four, one for each structure that Mr. Wilson would purchase and then one that, the development on Woodlawn, because I thought that was just fair to offer them.
Or is that McCarter?
Yeah. They said they possibly would only demo one, but he didn't assure me that he would even do that. So, we can just move forward with four and if it works, then if they come along and are interested in it, then it'd be only fair to offer them similar incentive.
Well, in my opinion, there's no progress without some risk. So, spent, most of my career's been spent in private enterprise, in corporations, and this seems like a very sound proposal to me. I understand I'm still kind of getting used to the accounting for governments, government agencies, but this looks like a good plan to me and I'd love to see some things come down on Main Street there.
Well, board, you've heard the presentation. What do you want to do?
Oh, yeah.
The first question would be, do we want to add that to the agenda?
Yes.
Amend the rule?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we amend the rules and add it to the agenda.
Okay.
That would be three minutes and then that's the line with the half wall. That's the video we're not supposed to work and I printed it down. So, it skips the other buildings that are falling in, that is the, I'll get you one aside.
We do have a motion on the board then to amend the agenda, add this to the agenda. It has been properly seconded. Please signify acceptance by aye.
Aye.
And nays have like sign.
Okay. Could I, I guess, Terry, maybe the, if someone were to make the motion, motion to?
We need an amount.
Yeah, with the amount, move forward with the plan in place, with the contingency that Trey's comfortable, because we will probably tweak a couple of things, right? Because you both said you were, you wanted the extension time cut down. Yeah. So, those little tweaks and things like that. But I don't think that's going to be an issue because the reason we're in here right now is Steve's wanting to move, like, now.
We have people ready to go first of November to start demolition.
But, yeah, just contingent on mayor being comfortable when he signs the contract.
Who want to make that motion?
I'll say it again.
But the motion has how much?
400,000. I'd say 400,000 because we're only talking about Mr. Wilson's project at the moment. If necessary, yes, for other projects.
How about someone restating that motion for the record?
I'll restate the motion for the record. Why do you need that exact dollar amount?
Four hundred. Four hundred.
I make the motion, we proceed with a figure of $400,000 and whatever.
Contingent and being contingent on the mayor being comfortable with the final agreement, yeah. In that way, if something comes up and we don't have, like it's before a meeting and there's a, yeah, so.
Okay. Have a motion on the board then. It's been properly seconded.
Roll call.
Yeah, we need a roll call for that one.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Absolutely, yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan?
Yes.
No one asked me, but I say yes too.
I will say that when Alderman Hansel first got elected, that was the number one thing on his wish list and priority list was to begin the process of revitalization for downtown. And he has worked on that ever since he's been in office. So, I know that's why that he.
I get twitchy every time we talk.
That he was enthusiastic about that. But he has been a dedicated proponent of downtown revitalization from day one that he come into office. And even when he was campaigning originally for office was his commitment to revitalize downtown.
And you and I both wish it didn't take this long, but I feel like the time and effort are starting to pay off, I think.
Mr. Wilson, I appreciate you taking the interest and effort to, because I'm sure there's probably other places that you could go. I hope you see something in us that we see ourselves.
My family roots run pretty deep in this area and I appreciate the contest and hope we may have a problem.
Well, we've been burned a couple of times, so, you know, unlike the mayor, you have to take a chance.
I'll do this like my granny was.
Be back.
If there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Somewhere.
We are adjourned.